Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day of life and we thank you for the blessings you give us. We ask that you would be with us in this meeting, be with the leaders of our cities as the city as they make their decisions. I wish to cross my mouth, pray.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 2019 Windfield City Council Meeting. I need to ask for a motion, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from March 19th. The council meeting, if anybody's got any questions or comments about the way those minutes were written, I'll need to ask for a motion to approve. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is a certificate of recognition for Devin Smith. I was contacted by Mr. Todd Fetter, a local car percher here in town, that felt like that Mr. Devin needed a recognition of an act that happened and assisted him in the situation that he was in. Let me read this certificate of recognition, recognition that I'd like to present on behalf of the city of Windfield. It's a great pleasure that I present this certificate of recognition to Devin Smith for the action taken on March 3rd, 2019 in Windfield, when a citizen was choking at a local restaurant. Mr. Smith, quick thinking, action possibly saved a person's life and he is to be commended for his efforts. The Heimlich maneuver was initiated and was successful in his attainment. The council joins me in commending Mr. Devin Smith for his heroic deeds that have a positive outcome for the individual affected by this incident. I'd like to get a picture of me presenting this to Mr. Devin Smith and Todd. Todd would like to elaborate a little bit on this, and if he had, it happened down here with our new business owners here in town. I know everybody knows Jason. Todd, he's just eating it up and kind of got messed up. But Devin, come on, let me present this honor to you right here. We'd like to hear stories like that where somebody's cut. Demonstrate to me what you do there. I told my wife, I hope my wife does that for me, but I thought it worked really good. I love Todd. Can't explain to us, Todd, you look around, try to take out the most healthiest looking person down there?
No, well, you know, if you're not eating there, you're gonna eat. It just got sideways, got in my pocket, and I knew I was in trouble. And I remember seeing Devin, just walked in, I was like, I gotta get Devin. So I gave him the choking sign, backed up to him, he recognized immediately what was going on, and I credit him saving my life that day. And that's why we live in such a good community, because of people like Devin. I just thank God for him, the whole family and all of y'all. It's good to be from Windfield. It's good to have a peach bar. But it's exceptionally good to have heroes, everyday heroes like Devin, that can just step up and do what's necessary, when the time calls for it. Now, I don't think everybody would do that, but he did.
Saved a 911 call, but didn't have to get no response from none of them.
That'd be sick. Been on the spotlight for sure, we got that man.
Sure, that's right, didn't want that.
Okay, Todd, was it the heavy cheese sandwich?
Absolutely. I like heavy cheese, it takes longer bites, to make it that's longer. But I've been back since then, it's all good.
Next item on the agenda is, we're up for a school board appointment, Windfield City School Board Appointment. I've got a letter here from the Board, Board of Education. I'm going to read this letter, the mayor of the Windfield City Council, this letter, the community to implore you that the Windfield City Board of Education desires to recommend the renewal of the Dan people's for another term of service as a valuable member. Dan has served the board with integrity and professionalism and brought wealth of personal professional knowledge to our board. Dan has due you to pursue it passionately in the alum association, school board academy, and what due you for the good of our students, teachers, and administrators in the state college. The board recognizes the authority of the city council, the points process, desires professional and corporate relationship with our city. Therefore, we desire the Windfield City Board of Education to respect the request of Dan people for another term as a valuable member for servicing this school system. Based on their recommendation, my recommendation to the council is to do a point, Dan people stood up forward, and they asked for a motion.
Motion.
Mayor, let me shut this door.
Sorry. If it gets very much louder, if you don't mind, because I have a hard enough time reading my head here. There's an even noise in the background, stop, still. Next item on the agenda is a resolution number 1235, record fees.
We wouldn't want to have to back off on that one again. Let's just, let's pass on that one, I've got, and go to the next one, the one about the, we spent our time getting the garbage thing done.
That's a good table that for now.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is a garbage ordinance amendment. Todd, have you come up with, have you got an ordinance?
Well, it's actually, after speaking with Mike today, what we've done is we've done a resolution. What we're really asking to do, and I'm, Angie, you may have to help me here, because I've got more papers than I can see. This didn't get all copied like I wanted it to. I think you've already got the first page. She gave everybody the first page, there's the rest of it. There's the rest of it, that goes with the first page. Here's another.
This is resolution number 1240.
1240, yeah, you got page one, did you get a page one?
You gonna mark this down, or?
I'm gonna break it down for you. Mayor, we're having, we're having some issues with people not properly, not timely paying their garbage bills. That's been the issue. And we talked about, when did we want to suspend garbage collection services? And we've talked about it, we've battled it back and forth. And what resolution 1240 does is it basically institutes the same type of policy and procedure for the payment of, payment and collection of water, of garbage bills, as we passed up at the water office. You know, we went to that seminar on how to do that, and how to increase revenue, and how to, without increasing rates, and how to get bills more timely paid. And it's basically the same type situation. It establishes a new procedure for the creation of a water account, I mean, a garbage account. There will no longer be a deposit paid. When you, when you begin an account, it'll be a $50 account origination fee, that's non-refundable. That's just to set it all up on our computer and get you the can. That's to get your account set up. It provides for the type of information that you must be, must present to the city in order to have your garbage service set up. It provides for the interruption of service, and it also provides for the suspension of services if you don't pay your bill. The most, I guess the most telling part, the most informative part of this resolution is the last page of the suspension of services. It says, "Garbage collection bills are due by the 15th of the month. A $5 late penalty will be added to bills not paid by the due date. If an account is not paid in full by 2:30 on the last working day of the month, a service fee of $25 per account will be added and the service will be suspended." To have service reinstated, the account shall be paid in full to include the service fee by cash payment only. If the account remains unpaid by the 15th day of the following month, in addition to the suspension of collection services, the account will be deactivated. To reestablish collection service and account origination fee, the amount of $50 will be required, and the unpaid balance in the customer's name shall be paid. So it just makes it a little bit more, it makes it quite a bit more punitive if you don't pay your bill and you keep running late.
Our world known $60 payment right now, set up service, so are we going back to 50?
That was the suggestion of Mike and Rob. I mean, that was the, these numbers can be moved. I put these numbers in at their suggestion, we can change the numbers that we put in there. But that was, that was the number that Mike and Rob suggested. Isn't that Rob, that $50? We had a meeting the other day up here, and then Mike and Rob came to my office again to go over this, to make sure we had it like we wanted it. One of the things that I would like to say is that the issue with the deactivating an account and the $50 reinstatement, or the $50 origination fee again, you know that we've got a provision in our garbage ordinance set. Everyone is required to pay, every citizen's required to pay for garbage, every resident. So what people need to understand is all we're suspending is garbage collection services. There will still be, each moment, even though you're not paying your garbage, and even though your garbage isn't being picked up, there will still be assessed against your residents, against whoever resides in that premises, $14. So that if your services are suspended, and you just don't come in here and pay your bill, you say, well, I'm just not, since they're not picking up my garbage, I'm just not gonna pay my bill. Well, three or four months rocks along, and you decide, well, I do need my garbage picked up, and you come back in here to pay it. Not only are you gonna owe your past due bill, but for all those three months, for those three months that you didn't pay your bill, you're still gonna be taxed $14, if it's a resident, $14 for each month. Now, there won't be a late charge applied to that, because we're not sending the bill, they're deactivated, they're not an active account. But that's still gonna be assessed against that property owner, against that property, whoever's residing in that property, because that's what the ordinance says. Whether you, whether you get picked up or not, every resident's charged $14 a month for garbage service.
If I'm not mistaken, we're the cheapest garbage fee in Marion County.
Believe so.
So that's not unreasonable.
I believe so. Now, Mike is going to address this a little bit in more detail, but one of the things that I suggest that we do, this resolution does not become effective, assuming it's passed tonight, assuming it's agreed to tonight. It doesn't become effective until June 1, 2019. The reason for that is, I talked to Mike about this, he can do a mail, our billing folks can do a mass mailing. We need to send a notice that summarizes this to all of our, and that goes to everybody, even the folks that are, even the folks that are late right now, even the folks that may be suspended right now, they can do a mass mailing that goes to everybody that we've got information on, notifying them of it. I suspect something about this will be in the paper this week, or the next week, or the coming weeks, the discussion that we're having tonight, and to try to inform the public about this. But what people need to understand is the same thing we faced up the hill, the mayor will tell you this, same thing we faced up the hill, is that the reason we're having to do this is not because of the, let's say, the 75% of the people that pay, like Roscoe, every month. It's the 25% of the people we have to chase down, and have to take the court, have to do all this to get them to pay. That's who this is, who this is. And although it changes the policy for everyone, the folks that are paying normally, if they will just pay timely, it will never affect them. This is only going to be punitive, a little bit more punitive to the people that don't pay their bill. It's a change in policy, and if you get caught, you know, let one slip, it might affect you one month, but if you're a regular payer. But technically, this is designed to target the people that we're having the most trouble with paying their bills in a timely manner, okay? And so if you pay timely, this won't affect you at all. But it really shortens the string on you, if you're not paying timely, it lets us keep, must getting, you know, too far gone. Another provision in here is if you write us a bad check, and you don't come pick your bad check within 48 hours, we suspend you immediately. So you can be suspended earlier for paying with a bad check if you don't come, then you can't by not paying. So, you know, if we call you and say, come pick the check up, and you don't come pick it up in 48 hours, we, boom, suspend you. And it's, hopefully, it's going to help with our collection, because we're having a real hard time with collecting garbage for garbage fees, having a real hard time with that. It's a struggle. Mike, you want to?
Not in that regard, just on the other exemption item, when it's appropriate.
Okay, and there was one other item in here that, if you'll remember, I want everyone to look at, one of the things that we're, that we're, this item one on the first page. Customers requesting garbage collection service will be required to pay a non-refundable account origination fee of $50, complete a contract for services, and provide two forms of identification, picture identification, such as driver's license, non-driver's identification, state or US government identification card, or Medicaid card, along with social security card or social security number. That's, we're requiring more information now, because we're going to try to use that municipal intercept to help us with collected past dues, and we need to make sure that we've got more information on than just my name and address and where I live. Because they require more information to do that. So I want everybody to understand that, we're gonna have a little services agreement update that's going to. And so what this is, this doesn't change our ordinance, because our ordinance doesn't deal with anything except the rules and regulations regarding how we do it. This is more of a policy, policy and a procedure that we're passing for the billing and collection of the fees that are talked about in the ordinance. Okay, so I don't think it requires a limited ordinance, I think this can be just, not by resolution, we're just adopting this as our policy.
Comments or questions on, it's not gonna affect the papers. I've run and pulled the ends, paid them bills, and done it for years and years and years. Have we been, have we been in progress with collecting deposits? Do you do anything with that deposit?
Well, we need to decide what we're gonna do with that deposit. We've only, we've been collecting deposits, haven't we?
Yes.
This is a non-refundable, and we're going to get away from collecting deposits, because that's just, that's aggravating. I mean, if it's a deposit, it's refundable, then what happens is, you gotta hold that deposit, and then when something happens, you gotta try to find where that person is to refund that, and it's just money that we're required to keep up with on a monthly basis and track, and it's just too aggravating, it's just too aggravating. So they're gonna stop charging deposits. Now, my suggestion is that we start refunding deposits.
That's what I was.
That's my suggestion, is just get that off the books so we don't have it.
If you refund deposits, there won't be no origination fee kept out of the deposit, whether you're gonna do a 100% full refundable deposit, there's no resonator for that.
Yes, yes, because they've already got, they've already, these are, this just applies to new accounts, accounts after June 1, 2019.
I think that's what, that's what I didn't hear you say anything about the deposit, and I think if we're gonna start this June 1, start in June 1, not before, we need to refund deposits.
And a good way to do that, a good way that can be done is to credit, if you got a deposit on somebody, is to credit it against their garbage account. And so if you've got $60, the first time you credit it, you take 14 away from that, and they've still got, do the math on that, Ms. Baker, it's 46, right? They've still got $46 credit, and you just keep taking 14 off until they owe some more money, and then they got a positive bill instead of a negative bill. That's the best way to do it, in my opinion.
Mayor, I just think we need to do that, I didn't know if you wanted to, if we need to add that or act on that the same way when you do this, to agree to do this.
I think the council needs to decide what they want to, what they want to do with that. As a, as a June 1, we're not going to take any more deposits, we're gonna do this account origination.
Think about it, discuss it, I mean, if we're gonna act on doing this June 1, we need to.
And Mike had, Mike had one thing he wanted to address that I didn't, he asked me about today, and I said, that's something that the council needs to, that's not something we need to do here, that the council needs to be made aware of it, and let them decide how they want to handle it.
I'll be brief, maybe. State Code of Alabama for solid waste allows exemption from garbage fees. If you have social security as the only income in the household, there's another way that they allow exemption from garbage. That is, if your local governing body uses income based to determine if you're eligible or not. For example, if someone has in their household social security, say a retirement check, maybe one person in the household has a part-time job, you look at all types of income, you add it up, and they have to meet certain income levels based on the number of people in the household. And one person in the household would be a smaller amount than say a three person. So while we haven't had this in the ordinance since we took over garbage billing three years ago, four years ago, we have had maybe one or two on a given year that we have exempted based on income. Even though by ordinance, it's not been approved by our council, but to help that individual family out, because you really have to be pretty low income level to meet the guidelines, but to help those individuals out, we've had one, maybe two on a given year that's met the guidelines. What I would like the council, what I'd like to ask you to consider is just simply approving this method to determine if someone is eligible for garbage exemption. If they have any other income besides social security, let us figure their exemption based on this method.
So you want to add that with this?
If it, if it needs to be added to the ordinance, or however our attorney sees fit, but just to have a, an approved by the council, to have that method approved.
So what you're saying is you've been already, we've already one or two times allowed it, but have we been very strict on how you look into what they qualify for?
They have to bring proof of income, of the different types of income, and we, there's a formula we follow.
I think it needs to be stricter than that, I think it needs to be, not necessarily proof of that one person's income that that account's in, or whatever, but there's other, other.
It's the household, it's the household, anybody in the household, any adult in the household, is what we count as far as income.
You're counting together, each form sale?
Yes. So if you have three people, mom, a dad, an adult, child that lives there.
Have you got any kind of children for age?
No, but it doesn't, it only, the way the state allows is it gives you some guidelines with adult in the household.
So you got state guidelines that you go by adding this to the order?
Yes, and we go by.
You're not trying to do anything, you're not asking that we do anything outside what's in those state guidelines?
Correct. We're just needing approved to be able to use that officially.
I think, I think you need to get us a copy of the state guidelines and let us, let the council look over those state guidelines, see if that's something that we want to adopt that the state allows. I mean, I think that'd be the best, what you've got between June to do that.
And that's, I'm gonna suggest that needs to be done by ordinance, because those are the exemptions to the provisions of the garbage. Yeah, it would need to be done by ordinance.
Questions, if we approve this resolution, we need to ask for a motion to approve it. You're good on that. Next item on the agenda is a park surplus bid, that's what we put up for the last council meeting, that we put up the bid down at the park. Angie's got the bids up behind you. Everybody, y'all got, if everybody got a copy of what, y'all have, do you remember if this is what we put up? Y'all don't look at that anymore? All these separate bids? What is this, what is this?
These were all taken at the park, and I, I don't know who they're from or what they're.
I think it's on the inside.
And these were all taken here.
Is these, let me ask you, is this, is all these one person?
I think it's two people.
Two people? These numbers, tell me what these numbers mean.
The item number.
That's the items. That's the items that they're on? We got two, I think we need one. We got some, we got several, but not a bid.
This right here is now. And then most of them are not. We don't know what this one was.
I'm gonna have to open it to, this is somebody bidding on item number one on the list if everybody's in that list there. Here's your hand. Item number one on the list is approximately 50 aluminum seat foot flanks, 24 feet in length. This is somebody bidding on item number one. Place a bid of $31.73 on item number one, a bid from Jake Black. This is somebody bidding on item number two. This is Joe Keers, bidding on item approximately 15 five-foot used metal posts assorted, used metal top rails of various lengths assorted, used rolls of four or six-foot galvanized metal two-inch Mary Schfan. Place a bid of $25 on lot two. This is on item three. From Jake Black. Item three's approximately 25 five-foot used metal post, approximately 200 feet of used metal top rail, approximately 200 feet of four-foot galvanized used metal two-inch Mary Schfan. About $25 on lot three. This is on item five. It's not even short. Item five is assorted used rolls, six-foot galvanized metal, two-inch Mary Schfan, assorted metal top rail of various lengths, $45 on lot five by Jake Black. This is on item number nine, which is a used salad bowl. Which from Jake Black, $15 on item nine. Item 11 is a 1998 Chevy Silverado pickup truck as is. $357 Jake Black. This is on item 12, used pull behind smoker grill from Jake Black, $25. This is on item number 12 from Wesley McNeil, which is the grill. $20 Wesley McNeil, item number 12. This is also Wesley McNeil, item number four, which is the used metal building frame, approximately 24 by 24 feet, 24 foot by 24 foot. $25. This is item number three from Wesley McNeil, approximately, which I don't believe that probably, but 25 five-foot used metal post, approximately 200 foot used metal top rail, approximately 200 foot, four-foot galvanized used metal two-inch Mary Schfan. $50. This is also from Wesley McNeil on item number one, which was that 50-foot seat foot flanks, 24 foot in length. $275. This is on item number 13, which is the lights, approximately 40, 50, 1500 watt used metal halight ball, field light fixture both in the house. This is not who it's from, as to who accepted the bid. Mike, they turned the bid into Mike City Hall, this is still in here. This is from Nick Tupper. He bids $100 on the item 13. This on item number one from Chris Lindley, which is approximately 20, 50 aluminum foot seat flanks, 24 by foot in length. He's got that. I guess that's item number 11 instead of one. That's on the Chevrolet pickup. $406.35.
Daniel Hart is bidding it.
Yeah. This bid's from Brandon Manasco on item number 11. He bids $300 on the number 11, 98 model, Chevrolet pickup. The last bid's from Austin Cry. Lucky's bid on everybody. I'm just gonna go by items, I'm not gonna list it. Item number one's $200. Item number two's $101. Item number three's $110. Item number four, $140. Item number five's $90. Item number six, $85. Item number seven's $35. Item number eight's $178. Item number nine's $80.10. Item number 10's $209.30. Item number 11, $698.10. And then item number 12, $102. And now my item number 13 is $42. If you got each one of those to, I mean, my recommendation is to let her go through, take the highest bids on each one of them, but get the council to approve and accept the highest bid on each one of them, let it all later. You make an opening, second, to take the highest bid, let Angie go through and get the highest bid. All in favor? All right, next item on the gym is old business. I've got, not really old business, but I think yesterday. We've had a park employee... Tell me, learn some speed about the park employee placement slash, you're in a different position.
We have Dylan Reese that has been part-time for quite some time now. Probably one of the best workers I've ever seen. He's a wonderful young man. He's on time. You don't have to tell him what to do. He just does it. And that's rare for someone his age. He was offered a full-time job. He's getting married. So he needs a full-time job. He turned in his notice because he could've went to work immediately. But he asked to stay until after part day and his future employer granted him that. It is the park board's recommendation. Chris couldn't be here tonight. He has a ball game. They would like to see, Dylan is 48 weeks a year. They would love to see him increased to 52 weeks a year as a full-time employee so that he might stay. That's their first recommendation. They have a plan B if y'all don't accept that, but they would love to see that happen for Dylan.
You want to move him to park supervisor's position?
Well, the first recommendation, after talking to Chris today, was to ask that he be moved full-time rather than part-time. It would be 10 hours more a week, because he's 30 hours for 48 weeks. This would be 40 hours for 52 weeks, because his part-time is a really big...
Keep him in the same position, but make it full-time?
That way he wouldn't leave.
How much is he making?
Right now, he's making $9 an hour, I believe.
Full-time and keep the pay the same, is that what you're asking?
I always mention him pay out there, except to y'all, but I'm not sure if what though.
If he goes in the full-time position, he gets the same benefits as all the rest of the kids. Are you understaffed anyway?
We're always understaffed.
But you're still two employees down, that would have to place...
That's correct. And with all due respect, I love our country and I appreciate what Rodney does for it, but with his specialty in the National Guard, he's gone so much, like he's gone two weeks right now. And I love him for it and I appreciate it, but that hurts us. I mean, it helps us in the long run, but it hurts us as...
That's the park recommendation. They're asking for us to move him into a full-time position and take the full-time position benefits like any other employee.
They would love to see that happen.
Based on the recommendation, if it's them who handed out, I recommend to council that's what we do and ask for motion, I make my second, all in favor? I don't think I've got anything else for old business, if you got any.
Ms. Payall's there now. His is paid today.
But you need to move him into, by interim?
Just to get him full-time now?
Is he full-time now? I don't think so.
He is not.
Okay.
He has a specialty in the National Guard where he's a medic and different things. And he goes to a lot of trainings. And right now, he's at summer camp for two weeks.
Anybody else have any old business?
I've got something, it's not old business, but this is a petition from the road down there across from Carter Estates that Linda died and Obie Darcy...
Kyle Road?
Well, it's never been named.
I know that, there was or may still be a sign down there that says Kyle Road.
I don't know if it's still there, yeah.
I've been, I met with the rural judge Fett and Commissioner Shane Hughes in that district. There's just a little bit of an issue on that road, which I'm trying to work with them on different roads in Fett County to see how we can better serve Winfield city limit people that's in Fett County on Fett County roads.
But this is in the city limits?
It is, and 911, which I've gotta get with Todd, but 911 will not accept that as a road.
Is that right?
They make all those people, those four people, I think there's four residents in that, down that road. They make them use a 171 I address. I don't know why or how, how that... There's a, there's an issue back prior to 1995 or something other where any road that was in the county within prior to 1995, the council will kill a flea. The county is responsible for it, I think. Anything prior or after, post-after 1995, that if anything's incorporated within the city limits, the city's to take responsibility for that. But that, that has never been classified as a road for some, for whatever reason. Todd can help me with that, force the legal part of it, but I don't understand why it's never been adopted as a road. Somebody, I don't know, which Todd's been sitting with the county council longer than I have, somebody has went in there and chipped and sealed that road or that, what they're gonna call a drive or whatever. Has chipped and sealed it at one time. I don't know if it was Fett County or if it was...
He told, Obie said it was with him.
Well, I thought I had heard it, the previous mayor. But this is one of the, this is what, this is the little bit of research that I've been doing on it in the past two or three months is that if, it was one of the city limit deals, that if you get in city limits, we'll pave this road. Now, that's just, here's, that's just what I've been told by different ones. For why it's not accepted as a road or not named by 911, I'll have to ask Todd that. I mean, when we adopted, we've got, it's just like the, you know, the one road we had up here that was a city street that we ended up giving back to the landowner because we didn't, because it wasn't one house on it, dead end, that house, blah, 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 blah. Was that in the, when, you know, when they built, laid out the city, was that road laid out as why we did that? Or is that just, we adopted that road as a city street to upkeep it when they did it? You know, a lot of streets, there's not really streets there, just like avenues has been, that never was used when it's laid out. I don't know if that, you know, somehow or another, somehow, that, those streets was actually named streets that never came to pass. But when we, when people build along the road and do we have to acquire that land from the landowners, say that that's a city street? Or we just adopt that as a city street and start maintaining?
Well, there's a, we've got streets, we've got streets all over Winfield that are shown on the tax map up there as city streets. Actually, not shown as city streets. They're shown as, as a public right of way. It's a 40-foot right of way or a 30-foot right of way or whatever. And some of them actually have, some of them actually have names, like First Avenue or whatever. And what it was is when, originally when that plat was recorded, subdivision plat or whatever, it was shown as a street, a future street. Now, Mayor, as far as, when we have, when we have in the past abandoned or vacated those, all we simply do is we give a quitclaim deed to close that. Because what we're seeing in the quitclaim deed, quitclaim deed is whatever interest I have, I don't know what it is, I'm not representing to you that I have any interest. But if I have an interest in it, or if the public's acquired an interest in it because it was recorded up there, then we're finding we don't need it anymore and we're giving it back. So I don't know why 911, I don't know where that comes from. And the only thing that we can do is go back in research on record to see when that, when that street came about and how that street came about and if the city's ever accepted a dedication. Now, you can't give a street to the city simply by filing the subdivision plat and said, "Here's your street. Oh, by the way, now we want you to open it, we want you to maintain it." We have to accept the dedication of a street. You can't just, we've got to accept it and say, "We'll take responsibility for it." It doesn't just happen because somebody puts it on a plaque.
But for us to go in there and do work on that and say, per se pave it, I think we've done some patch work on that street before, or on that road, or wherever it cost that drive or whatever, I think that we passed on. I think that we have and I think that Fett County has. Before we, does that street not need to be from the landowner offered to be dedicated to the city? And then the city will accept or not take that dedication of that street?
Yes, that needs to be, before, before we, I mean, if that's something we want to accept as a street, yes, it needs, the adjoining landowners of that property, of that right of way need to...
Both sides.
On both sides.
From the start to the back.
From the start to the back.
That's what I was thinking.
Because basically it goes from the center line, if that's a 40-foot right of way, the property owner on one side's got 20 and the property owner on the other side got 20. That's the way, that's the way you want to see that.
I think that...
That's everybody who's on that road.
That gets everybody on the left side of that road, except Daniel Horton, who's not on here. He owns the first house going in there on the left side. I want to thank Ted Smith owns the property on the left side, past Daniel Horton. We're gonna have to have it from those two. And then Dee Taylor would be the ones that goes around. And then we need it to the people that owns that, the rest of that property. Probably three more signatures, I think, that need to be on there. I mean, I can get a copy of the, I can print out a copy of the county map and then we can, we can take, let them, let them get those landowners and they can probably presume the same way they are now asking the city to accept that. And then we can vote on that.
So only the person, Daniel and Ted, do you know who owns that property to the right?
I do, I don't at the moment. That makes sense. I mean, I can't think of the name, but I'm... I, I do, though, I don't at the moment, I have no sense, I mean, I can't think of the name, but I'm... I'll ask, I'll be, yeah, if we can get those, and they know they're willing to, you know, let them go forward, okay.
Only one problem? One problem on the next?
Yeah. There's a couple of other places in town that's the same way. Happy Hill is named, Happy Hill. That's been a question before too, about whether or not it's, you know, cities. Is there anybody else? No, I need to go to the next item agenda, I need to ask for motion to pave the fields. I'll make the motion, that's second, all in favor? All right, I'm going, I'm going to need to ask to go in there and take the section, and discuss some potential business. I'd get motion going there. All in favor? We don't have any other business, I don't have any other business coming back in here.